Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is March 16, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by with Councilmember Hayden.
There is a popular Christian song entitled "Wary Traveler." Lord knows we're all weary from time to time, but somehow, some way, we find hope and faith. Lord, we know those in Ukraine are very weary and heartbroken as war devastates our country. Hope probably seems distant for them, but we know somehow faith shines through. Lord, bless this community and country as we pray for those seeking peace. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden.
Yeah.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Item five is the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember, I'm sorry. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Item seven is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 2, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens' input, we will be utilizing the podium to my left in front of the double doors.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Widener, and I'm here to discuss the sale by the governing body to the commercial vendor dealing with the Seven Island Project. My quest here today is to try to prevail upon the governing body to not sell all the islands at one time or together. We have very limited fishing as far as that is concerned for shore people like myself. If you have a boat, you're in a much better category. But I'm going to suggest that the city hold back some portion of that land to be used for the use of the land fishermen. And I prevail upon the committee to look into that agenda, please. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
School board ran out of that stuff. Shame on them. Never can be too careful because Omnicom's still out there. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Lou Navarre, Cape Coral resident, 40 years, retired teacher, 38 years, Lee School District. I'd like to talk to you about the tax increase here. Cape, City of Cape Coral, can we put that up, please? Eliminates public service tax. You guys, you must not be serious about wanting to be reelected. There are people here that can't afford 225? Well, Lee County Co-op computed it's like $5 to $6 a month for me. 550 kilowatts to LCEC advisor said, "You probably keep your lights off all the time." Now, there's poor elderly here, there's young people here, but you don't care. I am tired of you raising our taxes. Taxation without representation. Could you please put up the other photograph, please? I'm a veteran, I'm making the collage. Now, that's the kind of people you are hurting, aside from the elderly, aside from the young people here. But you just keep rolling on. There's an energy crisis. Ask Mr. Putin to quit. Next. Let's see what else we wanted to say here. You should have followed up like I tried to help you with the charter schools. You're raising this for the charter schools. Go to the meetings and tell the charter school reps, Mr. Mayor, ex-Mayor Joe Mazurkowitz, he's on the committee. You all snubbed me, you didn't even let me come with you that night. And I go to the meetings. The other thing I want to do is quickly talk, where's my time?
I got one minute, sir.
All right, well, I want to know my time. All right. I want to follow up on this proposal from the COW meeting of a second city attorney. I am not in favor of that, and you're going to cost us more taxpayer dollars. The current city attorney, me and my rep spent an hour with her, and she said, "See the mayor and bring your bills." Then Mr. Councilman who was at the meeting decided, "We need a second attorney." No, we don't. She needs to either be bought out. It's golden chains like the VA, and I deal with them. Golden chains. If the lady's tired, we buy her out. We don't create another position to cost more money. You don't have $20,000 for me, and you spent 54 with those crooks, but yet you got money to buy people out? And you raise a tax? Go back, I'll meet you on March 23 at the meeting.
Wrap it up, Mr. Navarre.
I will meet you. You come. Joe Mazurkowitz should be there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilpeople. Just met my councilwoman, Jessica Cosden. I'm glad to be here. Simple, I was here last August with a simple request that we kind of try to take a look at the trees being cut down, understand the people own the property. We just had a situation where the trees didn't, there was three very mature trees, didn't need to be cut down, and they were clear cut because it's easier, faster, and cheaper. And now I walk this street, and it's 10 degrees hotter. And yes, is it getting hotter? I've never had gardenias bloom in February before. I don't know if anybody has gardenias. But just, I made a video just to bring some attention, and I didn't get it in fast enough. But take a look, it's under savartree.com. I've got before and after pictures. It doesn't have to be stopped for the builders. It just has to be a friendly between the two. These houses aren't even sold, so they don't even know if the people that own them even want the trees or the ground cover. So I'm in the northeast Cape by the Gator Circle area, and I moved in in 2011. We are considered rural, and well, guess what? We're not rural anymore. So it's beautiful place to live, and we all moved here because it's beautiful with the trees and the beaches. We're so fortunate. But go to savartree.com, take a look. I'm just trying to get a temporary step back, please, to just look at the properties involved. And this one situation, a guy pulled up with a pickup truck. We knew that they were going to build there, you could tell. And behind him was his lowboy, and it was a front end loader came out and within 10 minutes cut down three trees like they were nothing. And I was homesick with COVID, and I started to cry. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't cost a trillion dollars to plant a tree or to not cut one down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. I am up here in regards to, I own a property.
Please state your name, sir.
Felix Kylie.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm up here, I own a property at 46, lot 46, 47, block 1501. It was residential, switched it to commercial, and now I like the commercial, but now you guys are talking to switch it back to residential. I'm just calling or asking if that could be reconsidered. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item 9A, which is the consent agenda. I'm sorry, Councilmember Cosden, I just saw your light going.
Thank you. I just want to say to the gentleman who just got up and spoke that if that's one of the hearings tonight, we'll be talking about that at the point in the agenda. So we're not ignoring you. We'll just be getting there in just a few items.
I'm sorry, is my first one, thank you.
No, 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 thank you.
That's okay. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Cosden. We'll move on to the consent agenda 9A. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item 9B is appointments to boards. B1 is approve the sunsetting of the districting commission, and I'll turn this over to Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The districting commission was appointed to review the boundaries and the property, the amount of residents in the boundaries that were existing, and they presented their findings. Then on March 2, you approved ordinance 1922 to redistrict. So they, I believe their assignment is complete, and was wondering if council would consider a vote to sunset them, which is just another term for the public to finalize their job.
Thank you. So we would need a motion.
Motion to approve sunsetting the Charter Review Commission?
Second.
Oh, we're doing the districting commission first, sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion to sunset the district commission in a second. Is there any discussion on that topic? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B2 is approving the sunsetting of the Charter Review Commission. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, similar to the districting commission, the Charter Review Commission was filled to complete an assignment to determine after a review of the charter, any items that council would like to have. They gave recommendations for referendum items. You have two ordinances being introduced today to finalize their role, and I present to you if you desire to sunset the Charter Review Commission, because I believe they have completed their assignment as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve sunsetting the Charter Review Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd. Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9C is unfinished business, follow-up for items for council. I don't see anything listed here. Any council members have any follow-up items? Okay, seeing none. The next item D is new business. We don't have anything listed there. E is personnel actions. We have no agenda items listed there either. Petitions to councils, we do not have any listed. So we'll move on to item 9G, follow-up items for city management. 9G1 is water quality. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, it's time for your regular update on water quality issues within the city, and I'll have Mr. Mike Ilchizen begin his presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mike Ilchizen, Environmental Works Director. I will let Maya discuss the Loosum process and any blue-green sightings, and then I'll give you an update on the bubble curtain.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Maya Robert, Environmental Resources Manager, Public Works. The stage of Lake Kukichobi is receding, and we are in a pretty good shape right now. We would like it to lower a little bit. We're still receiving about 2,000 CFS out of S-79, which is good. We will, we're still receiving beneficial dry season flow. We might start considering the ecosystem and fish reproduction and other important fisheries species in the next months to start to reduce releases. There is no blue-green algae blooms on the lake or along the Kalu Sahachi so far. On March 7, there was a stakeholder meeting for the Loosum process to introduce and start the discussion regarding the draft operational guidance document for Loosum. And a few days later, the South Florida Water Management Governing Board exceptionally met Sanibel Island. They toured several sites, including our C43 reservoir, which is a very important project for our water quality. During that governing board meeting, it was discussed that the C43 reservoir is late on schedule. I believe at the time it was 270 days. They're trying to catch up, but that means that in the interim between when Loosum is going to be operational and when the C43 reservoir is going to be put online, we're going to have to account for those dry season releases that will be needed to be sustained by more lake release during the dry season. So that's something that we will be incorporating into our comments to the Army Corps at the next stakeholders' meeting, which is next Monday. And in addition, we will also present recommendation for high, very high flow during the summer over 6,500 CFS to help the Corps better restrain those high flows. And with that, if you have any question, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last time I was here, I gave you an update on the bubble curtains, letting you know that the National Marine Fisheries had a couple last-minute little things they wanted to address in the letter of concurrence for our bubble curtains. One of them was the use of a boat, and we responded to the Army Corps and said, you know, it's not in the best interest of our diver to have to swim to land, carry this diffuser plate and swim out. You know, if we had to do that, the amount of time it would take to deploy all these would be exorbitant, and we really, really would like them to allow us to utilize a small boat. We received the word back a few days after our response to them indicating that we would like to use a boat, and that they have accepted that. They're writing language into the letter of concurrence that would require us to utilize a small boat and to deploy manatee strike prevention measures while utilizing a boat. Generally, what that means is the operator of the boat or a spotter needs to be on the boat with polarized glasses to be able to see in the water, just to make sure we're not going to injure any type of species. We have received all nine bubble curtains, so we have the equipment on hand, ready to go. We've continued with the upland electrical work. At this point, the last piece we have to do upland is basically to drill, directional drill from the cabinets to the seawall, the core drill. Our project manager is working with the contractor now to do that, and at that point, we will have basically completed everything that we can to be, you know, basically ready to do the in-water work at the time of release of the permit. So the project is advancing ahead of them. We're doing what we can, and the Corps and National Marine Fisheries did agree to our request to utilize a boat so that we could deploy these things efficiently when we're allowed.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ilchizen, for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item 10, ordinances and resolution. 10A is resolution 42-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 42-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bay Point Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 5 and 6, block 158, Cape Coral, Unit 14, Part 2. Providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 5 and 6, block 158, Cape Coral, Unit 14, Part 2. Property located at 5314 Bayview Court, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Justin Heller, Senior Planner with the Cape Coral Planning Division. So this is a vacation of plat case. This is a, you've seen this before, it's a standard vacation along the canal involving a strip of right-of-way between the property line and the seawall. This property is at 5314 Bayview Court. Specifically, they're requesting to vacate 323 square feet of canal right-of-way and all underlying easements, along with 275 square feet of platted easements associated with that property. Here we have aerial of the property, the zoning map on the right here. It's a single-family R1 zoning as are all surrounding properties. Some background on the site, the site's about 10,000 square feet, improved with a single-family home with a pool, dock, boat lifts. There's about 80 feet of waterfrontage along Bay Point Canal. However, there is a four-foot wide strip of unexcavated canal between the seawall and the property line, and the owners want to vacate that right-of-way to extend their site to the edge of their seawall. Here's the sketch showing the area to be vacated, highlighted in blue. And this is the easement that is going to be relocated. We will be retaining a six-foot perimeter easement to ensure a continuous perimeter easement around the site. All right, so we analyze this under section 3.4.5B. We find this vacation will not negatively affect the navigability or visibility of boaters using the canal, and this will only extend the property line to the edge of the seawall. All three utility providers have provided letters of no objection regarding this vacation, provided a continuous PUE is maintained around the site. The easements to be vacated are not needed for any current or foreseeable use by the city, and the owner has provided a sketch and legal description showing the easements that will be retained by the city for ensuring a continuous perimeter easement is around the site. So Cape Coral Planning Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and the hearing examiner is also recommending approval with the conditions outlined in resolution 42-22, and a hearing was held on February 16. And a standby for any questions you may have.
Thank you. And I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on resolution 42-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate. Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, I have a note here on ordinance 9-22. We cannot hear this until after 5:00 PM. Do you want to skip that one for now and go to ordinance 10-22, or what would you like to do?
Certainly.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to ordinance 10-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 10-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 1 through 24 and 31 through 34, block 3083, Cape Coral, Unit 62, and lots 1 through 22, block 4454, Cape Coral, Unit 63, from commercial to residential multifamily low zone. Property located at 1709 through 1823 and 1621 through 1627 Southwest Santa Barbara Place and 1013 through 1125 Southwest Eighth Place. Rezoning property described as lots 1 through 8 and 12 through 20, block 3169, Cape Coral, Unit 66, and lots 1 through 26, block 4448, Cape Coral, Unit 63, from commercial to single-family residential zone. Property located at 2621 through 2701 and 2711 through 2723 Southwest Eighth Court and 1201 through 1317 Southwest Eighth Place. Rezoning property described as lots 24 through 46, block 4560, Cape Coral, Unit 68, from commercial corridor to single-family residential zone. Property located at 725 through 767 Southwest Fifth Terrace, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, and good evening, Mayor and Council, for the record, Patrick Alton White, Senior Planner, Planning Department. This case is ordinance 1022. It's ZA 2114. The case is a proposed rezoning of five groups of properties. It's a city-initiated and companion case to ordinance 5121. That was a future land use case that you remember from a few months back, which changed a number of properties, future land use classifications, again, part of the citywide, city-initiated effort to reclassify some of these properties. This is the first of two cases. We broke them into two parts because of their geography. This set, briefly to summarize, we're changing about five acres from commercial to R1, a little over six acres from commercial to RML, and a little under three acres from commercial corridor to R1. This is a map displaying those properties. Thank you, Kimberly, for reading them all in. I won't read them all again in their entirety, but generally consists of properties on block 3083 and block 3169 and block 4448, 4454, and 4560. We're going to look a little closer at each one of these different areas in over the next few slides. next few slides. Again, as mentioned, the purpose of this is to provide consistency between the zoning and the future land use classification that was recently amended in January. When completed, 55 parcels will become legal conforming, 55 parcels will be consistent with their zoning and their future land use classification. 29 single-family residences and 16 duplexes will become legal conforming uses. This will allow homes that were built on those properties to expand or rebuild if necessary should they be damaged from beyond 50% of their value. So let's look at the first area. This first area is on block 3,083. It's from lots 1 to 24 and 31 to 34. The properties are on the back end of Santa Barbara, basically a road called Santa Barbara Place. The future land use following ordinance 5121, which changed it to multifamily. The zoning designation that's compatible with those is RML or residential multifamily low. There's a 20-foot-wide alley that was formerly vacated between these. There are three vacant lots which abut Santa Barbara Place, which aren't being proposed to be rezoned and weren't proposed to have their future land use changed. They had been assembled into a development that's basically acquiring full block depth. Of these properties, only one's vacant. The construction on the adjacent commercial lot will require a 10- or a 15-foot-wide landscaping buffer. That's pretty much the gist on that area. Rezone Area 2 had its future land use changed to single-family residential, and accordingly, we're recommending a rezoning to single-family. The area consists of eight parcels. They're improved with single-family dwellings. The properties were commercial since about 2011. We did note that the owner of the parcel that's in the middle of this collection has ownership with several blocks on the Southwest 8th Place, and we're not recommending to change that property's zoning or future land use because of the potential for full-block depth development there. Similar to the last area, should any commercial lots develop or seek to develop, because they'll abut a residential future land use, or excuse me, a residential zoning, they would require an enhanced buffer. Rezone Area 3 is another string of lots that was changed, that had the future land use changed to single-family residential. We're on block 4448 now, on the back end of Skyline. This block, the city is proposing to rezon to single-family residential. It's a little, it's about three acres. Seven of these 13 parcels have single-family homes on them, or, excuse me, on them. The properties have been zoned since commercial since 2011 with only one potential assemblage to the northernmost property. There's a platted alley which exists, which limits full-block development. The construction on those adjacent parcels that are on Skyline would require a 10- or 20-foot-wide landscaping buffer. Rezone Area 4 is on block 4454. It's lots 1 through 22. This is, again, on the back end of Skyline Boulevard. The properties had their future land use changed to multifamily via ordinance 5121, and we are proposing with this to rezon them to RML or residential multifamily low. All nine of these parcels are developed. Four of them have single-family homes and five have duplexes. Similar to the last case, there's a platted alley between them, limiting full-block depth. There's no property assembly that's evident, and should the properties on the east side on Skyline develop, they would also require that enhanced buffer. Rezone Area 5 is proposing to rezon a few lots, from lots 24 to 46, from commercial corridor to residential single-family. Eight of those 11 properties have single-family dwellings on them. The properties were rezoned to commercial corridor in 2004. No efforts have occurred to assemble any of these. The construction on those commercial corridor lots immediately to the north would require a 10- or 20-foot-wide landscaping buffer. In summary, the purpose of this rezoning is to provide consistency between the zoning map and the future land use map. Cumulatively, a net decrease of required city services is anticipated, as we're, in all of these instances, reducing the land use intensity from a commercial to a, basically a residential zoning designation of either R1 or single-family. Each of these comply with the zoning review criteria from LDC 3.4.6. That's further detailed in your staff report. And we found that these rezonings consist with policies 1.15, 1.7, 8.1, and 8.5 of the Future Land Use Division. So Planning Division's recommending approval. The hearing examiner heard this case on August 17th last year and recommended granting the request. Prior to the hearing examiner's hearing, we received an emailed inquiry, one phone, and one call in support. Prior to council, I received two emails, which you received in your citizens input pack. And I can, if by chance you didn't, I have them in paper, should you like to see them. I also received one phone call inquiry and one call in support. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, and we'll stand by.
Thank you. And I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 10-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 10-22?
Second.
Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, since we're past 5:00 PM, we'll go back to ordinance 9-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 9-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 47 through 52, block 1322, Cape Coral, Unit 18, from professional office to residential multifamily low zone. Property located at 218 through 224 Southeast 16th Place. Res zoning property described as lots 15 through 27, block 1458, Cape Coral, Unit 16, from commercial to residential multifamily low zone. Property located at 203 through 223 Southeast 15th Place. Res zoning property described as lots 42 through 61, block 1501, Cape Coral, Unit 47, Part 1, lots 3 through 10, block 2030, Cape Coral, Unit 31, Part 2, lots 1 through 32, block 3570, Cape Coral, Unit 47, Part 1, lots 19 through 21, block 3571, Cape Coral, Unit 47, Part 4, lots 1 through 18, 22 through 34, and 37 through 45, block 3571, Cape Coral, Unit 47, Part 1, and lots 1 through 8 and 21 through 26, block 3575, Cape Coral, Unit 47, Part 1, from commercial corridor to single-family residential zone. Property located at 1502 through 1538 Northeast 4th Terrace, 1,005 through 1,017 Northeast 15th Place, 402 through 526 Northeast 15th Place, 607 through 655 Northeast 15th Court, 1520 through 1532 Northeast 4th Lane, and 1519 through 1527 Northeast 4th Terrace, providing severability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be April 6th, 2022.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony on ordinance 9-22 must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand.
You can stand up right there, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again. For the record, Patrick White, Planning Department. This case is ordinance 922. It is ZA 219. Thank you, Kimberly, for the introduction. Like the last case, this is a city-initiated proposed rezoning, but this is seven groups instead of five. It's a companion to ordinance 5121. In summary, city staff is proposing to change .75 acres from professional to RML or multifamily residential, 1.6 acres from commercial to RML, and 15 acres from commercial corridor to R1 or single-family. This is a map of the proposed rezonings. There are seven of them. Block, miss, our, thank you, Kimberly had read in all of these. I won't read every one of them because we'll go into detail of them on the next couple slides. You will note, though, the cluster around Pine Island Road and Del Prado. So the rezones are part of the city's calibration efforts for properties where the land use and zoning were not consistent or where the zoning was contrary to the established development pattern. Ord 51 was approved, excuse me, 5121 was approved in January. If approved, 63 parcels will have consistent zoning and future land use. Those parcels contain 59 single-family homes and 34 multifamily units. Aside from allowing new residential development, this consistency will allow owners to expand or, if necessary, rebuild existing residential buildings. The first rezone area we'll look at is .74 acres. It's on block 1322. It is a set of two five-plex buildings. The, I've zoomed, there's an aerial image on the left. The map on the right depicts the greater future land use change that happened in 5121, which changed these properties to have a multifamily residential future land use designation. Staff is recommending to rezon them to multifamily low or RML. Again, as I mentioned, it's a two-set of, it's two five-plexes. The existing multifamily provides a good transition between the single-family to the east and the strip centers to the west. These two five-plexes were rezoned to P1 in 2006 by a privately initiated request, but no efforts to convert the units to offices has occurred. The, should these properties be, should any of the properties to the west, north, south, which are commercial right now, be redeveloped because of this RML rezoning, they would have a enhanced buffer requirement. Rezone 2 is solely for the Egrit condominium building. That's located on block 1458, lots 15 to 27. It's a proposed rezone to RML. The future land use was previously changed to multifamily. This follows up that effort. It's about 1.6 acres. It's four multifamily buildings, a clubhouse, and a swimming pool. The rezoning would provide consistency between the land use and the zoning, and should the professional properties to the south or the commercial properties to the east or north redevelop, then a enhanced buffer requirement would come into play because of this zoning change. Rezoning 3 is block 1501. I believe Mr. Felix has a lot on that block. This is, we're proposing to rezone lots 42 to 61 from commercial corridor to single-family residential. We've already changed the future land use to single-family residential. This is the follow-up rezoning. The total area is about 2.3 acres. All of these properties contain single-family homes. The future land use change to commercial corridor happened back in 2002, and then the rezoning to corridor in 2004, no one's really tried to assemble any property in this area. The, if approved, the, this would make these single-family homes conforming uses, allowing the owners to expand them or rebuild them should they be damaged beyond 50% of their value. Staff will note that should any of these commercial corridor lots, which are adjacent to this rezoning, redevelop, then a 10- or 20-foot-wide landscaping buffer would be required. Rezone 4 is a little north of there. It's on block 2030. It is four lots. Three of them are improved with a single-family home, and we have the support of the vacant lot owner. He can't wait to put in a building permit. This is .92 acres. The, it has no direct access to Del Prado. There's no full-block depth. The adjacent lots are owned by the City of Cape Coral and part of the Del Prado linear park or stormwater retention. Rezone Area 5 is a curved string of lots. It's on block 3570, lots 1 to 32. It is west of Del Prado Boulevard and a little south of Pine Island Road. The future land use amendment from ordinance 51, excuse me, 2151, changed these to single-family residential. This follow-through would rezone 3.93 acres from commercial corridor to single-family residential. Similar to some of the other rezonings we're proposing here, there's been no effort to assemble any of these properties. They've been this way since 2002 and 2004. Should any of the properties that are abutting to the north, south, basically the north or the south, redevelop, then because of this rezoning, a 20- or 10-foot-wide landscaping buffer would be triggered. Rezoning 6 is a string of lots along Northeast 15th Court. It's on block 3571, lots 1 to 34 and lots 37 to 45. It's about seven acres. The future land use has been changed to single-family residential, and the rezoning proposed is single-family. All of these lots are improved, except for one vacant lot remaining. The properties, like the others, were rezoned to commercial corridor in 2002 and, excuse me, 2004. No effort to assemble them is evident. The southeastern parcel on this block has frontage on Del Prado. It's an existing office building and is not part of this amendment. The construction on adjacent commercial corridor lots would, again, require a 10- or 20-foot-wide landscaping buffer. Area 7 is on block 3575. It's lots 1 through 8 and 21 to 26. The future land use change that was approved on 5121 changed these to single-family. Following through with that, we're recommending to rezon them to single-family residential. Like these other areas, there's been no effort to assemble them, at least on this side of the block, which is why we're leaving the other half of the block out. The parcels are all developed of single-family homes, and just like the others, would require enhanced buffer should commercial development be proposed on anything that abuts these. So in summary, if approved, 63 parcels will have consistent zoning and future land use. 59 single-family homes and 34 multifamily units become legal conforming uses. Like the last case, we're looking at a net decrease of city services due to a reduction in land use intensity resulting from these rezonings. Staff found this complied with all of the rezoning criteria from LDC 3.4.6, and we found it consistent with comprehensive plan policies 1.15, 1.7, 8.1, and 8.5 of the future land use element. Staff is recommending approval. The hearing examiner heard this August 17th, 2021, and also recommended approval. Prior to HECS, we received one emailed inquiry, two personal inquiries, three phone inquiries, three calls in support, and one call to oppose the rezoning at block 3571, and one call to oppose the rezoning of block 3570. And prior to this council meeting, I received one phone inquiry, one call in support, and one call to oppose the rezone at block 1501, who is in the audience tonight. Prior to the beginning of this public hearing, I spoke with Joe Trancita and Martha Hill, who reside in the multifamily building that is in rezone Area 2. They support the rezoning that the city is proposing, but we're not able to stay for this meeting. At this time, I have no further slides. I'll stand by for your questions.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. I'm sorry, we've already, my next one is, I'll now open up public hearing, I'm sorry. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 9-22, which would be you, sir, please come forward at this time. Please remember to state your name as well.
Yes, my name is Felix Kylie, and thank you guys very much. Nowhere prepared is where I should be, I guess, seeing these guys with all kinds of stuff. But, kind of dumb it down for you. Again, I've owned the property for about four years now. Started residential, switched to commercial, and now just trying to go back to residential. The house is four houses off of Del Prado. The first house is a property management house. Behind me is a big vacant lot that has a doctor's office. Right behind that is Burton softball field. Again, I would like to turn it to an assisted living facility. I know I can't do that being residential as well, but I would just like to get a couple more rooms in there. And I'm just requesting for you guys not to turn it back to residential. Keep it commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 9-22? Please come forward. Please come forward. Okay, the final public hearing, uh, will be held on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. There's no need tonight for any approval because we'll have a second. Do I need to close public hearing?
You closed the public hearing, but I just want to verify it's April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two is the final public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion at this time from council? And thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming up. Uh, there will be another, uh, final public hearing, uh, on this, uh, ordinance on April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to ordinance, uh, twenty dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as lots fifty through sixty, block thirty-two thirty-seven, Cape Coral, unit sixty-six, from residential multifamily low to residential multifamily medium zone. Property is located at thirty-six twenty-two Skyline Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Struve.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, for the record, Mike Struve. Planning team coordinator with the City Planning Division. My credentials are available, uh, through the City Clerk's office. This case, unlike the two previous cases, is a privately initiated rezoning request. There is one owner involved. That property is owned in the trust and that owner is requesting to rezone one-point-three acres from the residential multifamily low zoning district to the residential multifamily medium zoning district. This particular property is located at thirty-six twenty-two Skyline Boulevard, which is located in south-central Cape Coral. There's an aerial map on this slide with the subject site outlined in red. This particular property is vacant. Surrounding properties include a number of vacant sites, particularly to the west of this site, as well as a mixture of residential uses. That includes single-family homes, particularly to the west, duplexes and several, uh, smaller multifamily developments. There is one commercial, uh, property located directly south of the subject site that, uh, supports a gas station. Again, the rezone area is, uh, one-point-three acres. This site has frontage on two streets, including site, uh, Skyline Boulevard. Here we have a future land use map, current zoning and proposed zoning, the future land use of the subject site, as well as the entire subject block, which you can't see the northern portion of, but the future land use of the entire block is multifamily. The current zoning of the site, as well as the entire subject block, is RML. And the proposed zoning shown on the right-hand side of your screen would be to rezone the site from the RML zoning district to the RMM zoning district. Staff has analyzed this request, consistent with section three-point-four-point-six of the land development code. And I've summarized our analysis here on this slide. I've already gone over the uses that are in the area, which largely consist of vacant properties and a mix of residential uses. The existing RML district allows for a variety of residential uses. It allows for multifamily uses, for duplex uses and single-family uses. The proposed RMM district, on the other hand, we often refer to as a true multifamily district and it only allows multifamily uses. It does not allow single-family uses or duplexes. The RMM district does allow for greater density, a maximum of twenty-five dwelling units per acre, compared to the current zoning under the RML district that allows a maximum of sixteen dwelling units per acre. In addition, the RMM district allows for greater height, a maximum height of sixty feet, compared to a maximum height limit of fifty feet in the current RML zoning district. We've looked at this area and looked at several site-specific factors, which include the area of the subject site, which does meet our minimum area requirement for a rezone to the RMM district. Street frontage separating, separation from existing single-family uses and staff believes that this rezone, um, to the RMM district should promote compatibility with existing nearby uses as well as existing future uses in the area. The site does have centralized utilities. One thing that the site, um, does not have that we generally like to see in these cases is the site does lack full block depth. And full block depth allow for greater opportunities in terms of designing a site from a flexibility standpoint. One mitigating factor in this case, besides the frontage on two streets, is that the site does back up to an alley on the west side. So that does allow for additional opportunities for access and potentially for improved track, traffic circulation within the site, depending on the design of the project. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request. The hearing examiner has reviewed this case and the hearing examiner following a public hearing on this matter on January fourth recommended approval. There were no speakers at that particular public hearing. We have received one phone call, uh, on this case and that was just from an individual requesting more information about this project. And I'll stand by in case you have questions for me later.
Thank you, sir. Now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance twenty dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-two?
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate? Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Dentor?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two. An ordinance, ordinance of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending ordinance eighty-seven dash zero-zero as amended, which established the City of Cape Coral investment policy for surplus funds. By adopting an amended City of Cape Coral investment policy, a copy of the amended policy is attached hereto and incorporated herein, providing severability and an effective date.
I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to staff. Mister, uh, Mister Mason, sorry.
I was ready to be public for a minute there. Thank you very much, Mayor. So, part of our, uh, goals with, uh, some of the policies that we have is that we review them manually and one of those is our investment policy. Kind, you know, kind of keep up to date with what's going on in the investment world. And, uh, I wish I could be a little more nimble in how we could do that, but the, uh, you know, with the way, the, the, uh, way investments are occurring today, you know, the, the volatility is incredible. So what, uh, our annual, uh, this isn't up. Hopefully they'll get the presentation up. There it is. Okay, so we look at this annually. The overall scope, uh, and the, and the policy itself is established pursuant to statute, uh, which gives us the, uh, the option of either following the Florida statute for investments, which is very limited in what you can do. As, uh, all the alternative is to develop your own and have the opportunity to invest a little broader, uh, scope of, uh, type of investments. So we look at this annually. We come before you. You adopt the very, the investment policy by ordinance for any changes that we have. And, uh, the investment committee, uh, met with our external advisor, went through these changes and approved the changes, uh, that are before you today on January twenty-eighth, uh, of this year. So to begin with, we start with the, uh, I'm going to go through each one of these, you know, fairly quickly. So if you have any questions on any one of them, just let me know. So in authorized investment institutions and dealers, one of the changes that we've made is we've added a definition for allowing us to also use issuers of other authorized investment types. At the same time, we've caught, uh, qualified the fact that we can also use non-primary dealers along with primary dealers. At the same time, we've added some additional language that, uh, would allow us to, that basically says that the finance director, when he's doing any, um, transactions or executing any transactions, they must be done with a broker that is also a, a qualified public depository in the state of Florida. For recommended updates, uh, let's see, we also have maturity and liquidity requirements. What we've done in this case is that we've added, over the course of the past six months, we've added an additional portfolio to our investments. And that's a three-to-five-year portfolio. And it's added to, we also have a one-to-three-year portfolio, which is site, uh, very short-term. We also have a one-to-five-year porto, portfolio that allows kind of a little middle-of-the-road, but at the same time, we looked at the three-to-five and it really broadened our horizons a little bit. So what we've done here is that we've changed our weighted average maturity from three years, which would have been fine on the two types of investments that we had, our portfolios, but with the add of a three-to-five-year portfolio, it has a bit of a longer term. So when you take that and in the aggregate for all portfolios, it needs to be a little bit longer than three years. But it is certainly less than the statutory requirement of five years, which we're limited to. So we're, we're looking at a weighted average of about three and a half years. So one of the things that we're required to do as far as the investment policy is concerned is that, is to have competitive selection for each one of our investments. So our investment advisor is required to utilize competitive investments every time that he's out there, uh, you know, either, uh, in, in purchasing investments for our, for, for our portfolios. We also run up against the cases where there might be only one. In other words, there's only one bidder. There's only one, uh, qualified bidder that can sell the, can sell a particular investment. One of the ways we run up against this is when there's new issues. Generally, when there's new issues, there's only one person or one, uh, qualified, uh, primary dealer that's actually selling the security. So, uh, we were limited to having three and so we're looking for a little flexibility here that if we need to and only use one, uh, that we have that, that we've made the attempt to find more than one, but there is only one for that. Authorized investments, portfolio, uh, composition. Years ago, the, uh, Governmental Accounting Standards Board basically changed most of our reporting requirements for investments from original cost or cost to market value. So we're making this change within our investment policy that we're, that we're identifying the percentage allocations to market value as opposed to, uh, just original cost. What this means for us is that, uh, within the port, within the, uh, the investment policy, we have a number of different investment types that we can use. We'll just take it as an example, a, a mortgage-backed security. So we can only, we limit our ability to have mortgage-backed securities to a total amount of the portfolio. And we were originally looking at original cost as identifying what that was as a percentage of the total, total portfolio. But because we report everything else on market value, it kind of, you know, you're looking at this original cost as the restriction, but your market values may be adjusted to that. So what we wanted to do is create some consistency across the board and looked at market value as a whole. So what that would mean to us is that the market values of investments, as an example, let's just say mortgage-backed securities can only be ten percent of the total portfolio. But on any one day, the market value of that portfolio might put it at eleven percent, might put it at nine percent. So we want to be able to have that flexibility in there to reflect the fact that we have, uh, you know, on a market value basis of what that percentage is. And if we need to decrease the number of investments in that particular, uh, area of investments, we can do that. We also added some language to allow for the fluctuation of that does and the percentages do. And we're also limiting, uh, the, to, um, within our portfolio, that thirty-four, thirty-five percent of the portfolio composition can be corporate notes, but it can only be no more than ten percent in any one industry. So when you're looking at an industry basis, we might be looking at the banking industry. So we want to limit the amount of corporate notes, you know, to banking industries of ten percent of the thirty-five percent of the total. This way here, we're diversifying, we continue to diversify the portfolio, but we want to limit the concentration in any one particular industry. Let's see. In this particular one, we're also clarifying the maturity limits. Uh, we, we had some scribbler errors in there where we might've had to, the maturity limit in one place is one number and a number and another nu, and, and another, in another area. So we wanted to create and correct some of those scribbler errors. In addition, we're recommending that we update the intergovernmental investment pools to allow us to li, uh, also invest in triple-AF, uh, portfolios. And a triple-AF portfolio versus a triple-AM. Triple-AM is a stable NAV-type portfolio where dollar in, dollar out. Triple-AF is a variable rate portfolio. Within this, uh, vehicle, we would also limit the amount that we can invest in it because it is a variable rate portfolio. So, uh, alls we're doing is providing, you know, the opportunity to take advantage of the marketplace, but at the same time, limit, uh, where, how much we can actually put into these. On the performance measure side, we're adding, uh, an additional, uh, we're actually making changes because the Merrill Lynch, uh, portfolio name is no longer. ICE brought, bought them out, so we needed to make the change for the name changes. And last but not least, uh, we're putting the investment committee back into the, uh, investment, uh, policy. For whatever reason, it was taken out of the investment policy and put in as an administrative regulation and, uh, I'm recommending that it be put back into the investment policy where I believe it belongs. And that's it. Here for any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I'll now open public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two? Any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Dentor?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten B introductions. We have ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Purchase and Sale of Real and Personal Property. Division One, Purchasing of Goods and Services, Section Two dash one-four-four, Procurement Procedures, and Section Two dash one-five-zero, Appeals and Remedies, to modify the Selection Advisory Committee process, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none. Move on to ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two. An ordinance providing for a referendum to consider the adoption of amendments to Section four-point-one-one Vacancies, Forfeiture of Office, Filling of Vacancies of the City of Cape Coral Charter concerning the filling of vacancies of the mayor and city council members, providing for publication of a notice of the referendum election, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Any council or staff discussion? Seeing none. We'll move on to ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two. An ordinance providing for a referendum to consider the adoption of amendments to Section four-point-two-one, Authentication and Recording, Codification, Printing of the City of Cape Coral Charter concerning records maintained by city clerk and their accessibility, providing for publication of a notice of the referendum election, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million five-hundred thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of obligations in the form of a line of credit or master lease purchase structure for the per, principal purpose of financing- Purchase Structure for the Principal Purpose of Financing the Acquisition of Vehicles, Including School Buses for the City's Charter Schools, Providing for a Covenant to Budget and Appropriate Legally Available Non-Advalorem Revenues to Make Payments With Respect to Such Indebtedness, and Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be April 6, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or counsel? See a nun, we'll move on to Item 11, Reports. Counselmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, I just attended the Special Pops Guardian Angels Fashion Show on Saturday. It's really become a must-attend event for me, just watching the Special Pops participants, the looks on their faces, how proud they are to be wearing the clothes that, you know, that they are, and watching them smile and dance, and, you know, it's just a, it's just a highlight event for me. And then another special thing they did this year was they painted seashells with different images on them, and it was real touching and poignant to see that. So congratulations to everyone that put that event together, and especially the Special Pops participants. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselmember Long, report.
Yeah, Mayor, briefly, I just wanted to take a minute to recognize and congratulate the Lee County 2022 Golden Apple recipients, especially our very own here in Cape Coral, Stephanie Osterhaus with Skyline Elementary. She teaches first grade there. It's my understanding that her husband teaches there, her daughter attends, and her father taught there as well. So family that's pretty deeply entrenched in the community, and I just wanted to recognize her, congratulate her, and thank her for all she does for the kids here. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselmember Nelson, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I participated in the Gay Pride Parade with our mayor and Councilmember Cosden and Councilmember Hayden, and it was a great event and proud to celebrate diversity in our beautiful city. And the city manager, he was there too. I also attended the Soup Kitchen Event, which has benefits Community Cooperative, and they have giveaways here, even in the city of Cape Coral. They touch all of Lee County where they do a food, mobile food bank, and we saw that a lot during the pandemic. It was a great event. I also attended the Crow Gala, which is the Center for the Rehabilitational Wildlife. 33% of their wildlife come here from Cape Coral, so I was happy to be there to show our support to that organization. I just flew back today, a little before 2:00, from Washington, D.C. I attended the National League of Cities Conference. It was a great conference, participated in several seminars about economic development as well as affordable housing, and some homelessness, small homelessness discussions. So that was very beneficial, I think, to us. I spent yesterday, actually, the first night, on Monday night, Senator Rick Scott attended our Florida delegation reception at the National League of Cities. I was able to speak with him for about five minutes, got some information on the infrastructure bill that they've been talking about, when the funds will be available for our municipalities to be able to apply. So I was, I was very honored to have that conversation. Yesterday, I spent most of the day on the Hill, visiting with Senator Rubio's staff, who were very sad I wasn't Councilmember Tate. And, yeah, their face was really disappointed, but I did good, I did good. I had my talking points that you had given me, and they wanted me to remind you and all of us here in southwest Florida, especially, that they did make an amendment to the bill, the original bill for flood insurance to, instead of having an 18% increase, 7%. So they wanted me to make sure I communicated that. In addition to that, I met with Congressman Donald's office, and they will actually be submitting earmarks. So our lobbyist, Amanda Wood from Becker, is going to put together some earmarks, work with Maureen here on staff, and get the earmarks in the budget. So what that means is that it kind of gives a placeholder for items that are important to his district, and Cape Coral being a large city in it, they were very excited and encouraged that we would be submitting some earmarks for the budget. The other thing I wanted to mention briefly is that while we were on the Hill yesterday, there was a brand-new federal legislation that was actually introduced, and it's called the Flood Insurance Pricing Transparency Act. And this will do exactly what I believe Councilmember Tate and many others have been saying all along, is that we need to understand how FEMA is arriving at the 2.0 risk factor. So what this bill will do is it will show that, it will ask FEMA, require FEMA to show their formulas, to produce their formulas, so that that way, individuals in the insurance business and homeowners are able to calculate what their flood insurance would cost under these new regulations. So there's a lot of activity going on. I was very encouraged. Our congressman's legislative director, Alex, was incredible. She said that she's gone so far as even to speak with other coastal districts and delegations in Louisiana, South Carolina, to talk to them about the importance of pushing for change for this bill. So stay tuned on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Shepherd.
Your report.
Counselmember Tate.
Your report.
Counselmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a very special thank you to the Cape Coral Police Department. Over the weekend, a young man went missing in the downtown area, and his father has been a family friend for over 25 years, and I've known him his whole life. And it was very unfortunate that when they found him, he was no longer living, but they worked tirelessly, and I just want to say thank you to them for all their hard work.
Thank you. Counselmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I attended Pride, along with several others, and I did not go to the National League of Cities, as you are probably all aware, because my flight was canceled and I could not find a way to make it work. So I'm sad about that, but hopefully I'll be able to go next time. Thank you.
Thank you. My report, March 4th, I was a guest speaker at the Youth Council meeting at a request from Councilmember Hayden. March 5th, I participated, along with several other council members, the Cape Coral Pride event. On March 6th, I attended the Lighthouse Awards, another great event that we have. And also, on March 9th, attended the NPO Executive Committee Meeting. And on March 10th, I attended the, I'm sorry, March 12th, along with some of the other council members, I attended the Special Populations 13th Annual Fashion Show and Auction, another great event for a great organization. They use this particular event as their primary sponsors, or to get sponsors for donations. And if you haven't, haven't been to that event, I would highly recommend trying to attend that event next year. March 14th, I attended the, at Cape Coral Charter Schools Oasis North, wanted to recognize the RIS Family and the RIS Family Foundation for their contribution that they made to the charter schools to provide the maker space at that particular school, which will give the students of that particular school the opportunity for some higher education, where they will be taking a look at things similar to robotics. So because of the RIS Family Foundation and their contribution, that that particular school will have that type of program in their school, which will help grades kindergarten through 5th grade. So I was glad to see that for the charter schools. Also, as a guest speaker, I believe, along with Councilmember Shepherd, at the Southwest Cape Coral Action Committee Quarterly Meeting on March 14th. And that's all I have as far as my reports. One thing, quickly, I wanted to bring up to counsel, I kind of wanted to work with the city attorney's office to explore the idea of a deputy city attorney. I know right now there's one vacant position in there, but I wanted to have a discussion with the city attorney to see if there's a need for a possible deputy city attorney. So just to take a look at the structure of the city attorney's office, to see if that, if there is a need for that particular position. And if it is determined that there is, then I'd work with the, because that position is not currently in our structure, so we would have to not only design and outline exactly what that position would be, we'd have to make that position a part of our organization. And, but I just wanted that opportunity to, to work with the city's attorney's office to see if there is a need for that.
I'll give you a second to do that.
And then once, once I have that information, before I bring anything back to counsel, maybe I'll bring it back for committee at a whole meeting, so we could have that discussion before, before we move forward with, with any formalized process.
And Mayor, will that mean that, so a deputy position, in theory, we would look at, similar to an assistant city manager position, where we can develop the individual in that position to eventually, you know, move into the city attorney role, or?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we can take a look at. You know, I think more importantly, as well for me moving forward, I think that that should be a position very similar to the city attorneys, the city attorney position, where counsel has a input on that particular individual, of course, by the recommendation of the city attorney. So that's something, if we find ourselves going down that path, that we can have a further discussion on.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Madam City Attorney, report.
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager, report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I actually have two items for the council's consideration. First, I'd like for you to consider amending your approved meeting schedule and tentatively schedule another workshop this month on Wednesday, March 30th. If you want to do 9:00 a.m., that's fine. I've got some projects and issues that I need to brief counsel on, and I don't know if, they won't be ready for your, your next workshop, which is next week, and April 13th might be a little too late. So I'd like for you to consider having another workshop meeting, again, March 30th. If we don't need it, we can always cancel it, but I need that flexibility.
In my understanding, Mr. City Manager, that day, we have a special council meeting with the youth council at 4:30? So if we were going to have that meeting, what were you thinking as far as time, like 1:00?
I leave that up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, we also have, some of us have registered the post session with Senator Rodriguez and Kathleen Pasadena, that's at 11:00. So if we could meet at 9:00 and be out of here by 11:00, then we could do, no?
So probably maybe 2:00. I think that luncheon, it's usually from about 11:30 to 1:00.
Yeah, so we could be here at 2:00.
I think 2:00 would probably work. I forgot about that event.
And then we have the youth council meeting at 4:30. Would that be enough time?
Do you have flexibility in your start time in the event we go over on the workshop?
Nothing.
Workshop's starting at what time?
2:00.
Workshop's starting at 2:00. That gives us 2 and 1/2, but in case we go a little longer, do you have flexibility?
He's talking about the youth council. Do you have flexibility there?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Have we advertised that meeting? Yeah.
So it's been posted on the website. The ad has not gone into the newspaper yet, but it is pending, and a certain...
How much flexibility are you thinking?
I will do everything to wrap up those topics in the time that you've allotted, but I can't guarantee it. It all depends on how much public input we receive that day.
It might be another great opportunity for the youth council to sit in.
Yeah.
No, I understand. I just didn't want to get into a situation where the youth council, city council meeting wasn't starting until 5:30 or 6:00.
Well, maybe we could...
That would be too long of a...
Would that be your meeting time?
No, I don't...
Go with the youth council?
No, I don't want to reschedule.
Just to be later?
I'm sorry, Counselmember Cosden, I didn't hear.
Sorry, I was just saying, could be, could be rescheduled as in move it to 6:00, the youth council portion? Or do you think that's asking too much?
I just don't know with their schedules.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, their high schools.
If they've set.
Well, let's do this.
And I'd be really concerned if we were having a four-hour workshop anyway.
Madam City Attorney?
I was going to suggest that I would not think the youth council joint meeting would be a very long meeting. Would it be possible that the discussion regarding the items that the city manager maybe wanted to bring up at the COW could be brought up after, or at the tail end of the youth council meeting? I'm just asking the question, I'm not...
And when you look at, because I approved the COW meeting for next week today, that's, I think we have a full schedule there.
Definitely can't do it.
Yeah, six or seven topics of discussion next week's COW meeting. So first thing I thought of was maybe we could add it, but definitely you're not going to do that.
You know, there's another luncheon with all the other representatives coming up too, so, I mean, we could just go to one instead of both. I just thought it would, like, courtesy, somebody, I mean, at least you wouldn't have to be here, right?
Yeah, I think...
Two to six, we wouldn't be done?
In all fairness, you've scheduled the youth council meeting for 4:30. I like Delores' suggestion that if, if the workshop runs long, maybe we can, again, on the back end of the youth council...
I guess you have to discuss priorities then, too. I mean, I'd still like to go back to 9:00 and have the workshop.
We'll be done in time, because the Pasadena...
I know, I'm not as, what I'm saying is I'm not as concerned about that luncheon since it's just going to be a review of things we've already heard. So...
We should have our mayor at a, at a meeting where these people are coming.
Again, it's, to me, it's about priorities and, you know, if you, if you want to look at continuing the discussion, that, yes, the youth council, city council meeting shouldn't be a drawn-out affair, and we could resume the discussion on your topics then. But I just wanted to bring it back up that we have more flexibility if we started at 9:00 to get through everything rather than picking it up again after we've already discussed it and making it a little bit more disjointed than maybe what it was. So...
I'm okay with 2:00.
I'm, I'm with this.
Yeah.
I'm good with either time. I would prefer 9:00 in the morning, though.
But, can I say something?
Sure.
So, so the 9:00 a.m. time for COW meetings are going to affect my ability to be able to participate in Horizon Council Executive Committee meetings. This year, when we, we've got a new chairman for Horizon Council, the meetings were moved to Wednesday mornings at 8:30. So I won't miss all of them, but I'll miss three of them, so I just wanted to point that out. They're, they're, they are the executive committee meetings where all the municipalities and the county are there for those meetings. The general meetings are still on Fridays, so I just wanted to say that. The 9:00 a.m. will, I won't be able to be both places, so there'll be three meetings that I miss. I just wanted to let you all know. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So to get back to the topic of the COW meeting for the 30th, what do we decide? 2:00 is fine?
Better.
Okay. And then, worst-case scenario, we'll do our youth council meeting and then just pick up thereafter, if there is a need. Counselmember Nelson, Counselmember Cosden.
I was scheduled to work that day, so I'll need to be late. I'll be here by 2:30.
Okay. All right. All right. So...
Need a vote on that, Kimberly?
I think it was, a consensus has been received. It would be up to the council if they would like a vote.
Yeah, I think as long as we have a consensus, and I think we have at least five people that agreed to the 2:00 p.m.
Okay. That's good.
Okay.
So, similarly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the council to schedule a special meeting of the city council to be held on Friday, May 20th of 2022, at 9:00 a.m. here in these chambers, and for the purpose of holding a ULI Advisory Services Panel Stakeholder Results Meeting. So this is where, prior to ULI concluding their field visit and beginning their work on the written work product, they come in as a body and they meet with you as a body, and they present their, their findings and recommendations, engage you in some conversations before they go off into the next... before they go off into the next phase and start putting pen to paper.
And then 9:00 in the morning?
That would be a 9:00 AM meeting, yes.
So May 20th, 9:00 AM, hold a special City Council meeting?
Right.
Any problem with that, with council?
No, yeah.
So looks like, do you need a motion, since we're going to be changing the schedule on that, Madam City Clerk?
So I look at that one a little different, since it's a voting special meeting. I would request respectfully...
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve meeting, a special meeting on May 20th?
Second.
At 9:00 AM?
And the topic of discussion?
It is ULI Advisory Services Panel Stakeholder Results Meeting.
Just add that to my motion, Kimberly.
Will do. I'm a second agrees.
Second agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, time and place of future meeting. We have a committee, the whole meeting, that is scheduled for Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at 9:00 AM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.